All right, well, welcome, folks. This is a meeting of the Lee School Committee. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. It's seven o'clock and we are meeting in a virtual meeting room per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. This meeting will take place virtually via Zoom. All right, and let's call things to order pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and an audio recording is being made of the meeting. And let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice.
World. Thanks, folks. Okay, and our mission statement, the mission of the Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. All right, Brenda, could you take roll call, please?
Mr. Abbott?
Yeah.
Mr. Daley?
Yeah.
Mr. Kinnis?
Here.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Westcott? Does anyone see Mrs. Westcott?
No.
Mrs. Lucy?
Here.
And Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. All right, so Board, at this point, I want to ask for your permission to take the agenda out of order. We have our attorney, Dupree, with us, and he is very busy, and I want to be able to get to his item that we need his help with as soon as possible so that he can move on to his other things. So I would like to move the Union 29 agreement to the first thing in the agenda. So I believe I need a motion for that. So if somebody would like to make a motion to move the Union 29 agreement up to the start of our agenda.
I'll make a motion to move the Union 29 conversation to the top of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, and Brenda, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott? Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. Thank you. All right, the motion passes, so we're going to actually start tonight a little out of order. The Chair of the Lee Board, the Chair of the Tieringham Board have been working to come up with an agreement of writing, which we have not been able to locate through all of our searches, an agreement of writing for our Union 29 setup. We did present board members with a draft of bylaws for Union 29. So what we're looking for this evening is an approval of those bylaws to bring. Now, let me get this right. Got to check my notes, sorry, folks. We are putting them in front of you guys to discuss. And yes, we are going to vote on those. If we approve them, they will go to Union 29 to also be discussed and approved. Andrea, you look like I'm getting it out of order, so go ahead.
No, you're not getting it out of order. You can do any order you like. It's just I'm not going to be endorsing this agreement at all, and I would rather we had time to read it. It says nothing about financial weight. It says nothing. I don't know why the sped directors referenced in there. There's some governance issues I have an issue with. So I would, I would request that this, we just got this, what, Friday? I would request that you give us some time, and yeah, that's what, and I would assume the towns have to be involved at some point, but we defer to Russell. This is not what I was asking for, and so I was pretty surprised to get it this, in this format. So that's just my two cents. The Board, other members can vote as they like.
Thank you.
Can we? Well, I'd like to put a motion out there so that we can have our discussion. So I'll entertain a motion to accept this agreement, and that opens it to formal discussion. So I feel like if we're at this point, I do want to check with all the board members that they have read this document. Does, as Andrea pointed out, it was sent out on Friday. Did everybody get a chance to read it?
Can I, I would also say that when it came, I was confused as to whether this was the new document or whether it was something that you had found, because there was no sort of content in the email other than what had come. But I, I also have some concerns about the fact that a lot of the stuff we had talked about tackling doesn't appear, and I've, and I've only glanced over it because I, again, I wasn't really sure. But I do have a concern that a lot of the stuff we had talked about wasn't, doesn't appear to have been tackled in there. So I don't know if this is like step one of like multiple things, or if this was like the end product of what you had done.
I think it will be a multi-step process. This is still, you know, the draft form. We wanted to put it to the Board to get feedback and then bring it back to the work group, make any changes that we needed to do, and then, you know, move it on up the chain. But it sounds like we need some more time to look at this. Mike, it's my understanding the financial agreement was going to be a separate document, not part of the bylaws. Is that correct?
So that's what I, that's what I was to understand, was that there was going to be a Union 29 agreement, but that the, the financial piece was something that was going to live separately from that. But that's, that's simply my understanding. I would, I would certainly defer to the Board and also welcome Attorney Dupree's thoughts about that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
What I thought we were doing tonight was looking this over preliminarily. See what additions needed to be made, or deletions, or, you know, things you think are missing. And then we could revise it and try to get it in more final format. But as far as the financials, I mean, this document is something that kind of is a more permanent document where the financials might change year to year. So it's not, so as Mike Richard said, that's usually would be a separate, you know, separate document.
Okay.
So we usually handle, I mean, not the budget difference, but the tuition agreements are handled, you know, every year we should be approving tuition agreements, and that is part of some of the budget. And then there's also busing that is not addressed here. So Chrissy, I don't know how you want to do it. I would prefer we had maybe a little bit more time to read it.
But though, so those issues wouldn't be in, in the agreement itself, because those are things that change periodically. The agreement should, is more like a regional agreement. It's actually the precursor to regional agreements, because you, superintendency unions were in existence long before regions. But it's a document that's not really meant to change all the time, where your tuition amount, your transportation agreements, those type of things might change even yearly potentially. So they're usually two different things, two different documents.
Russell, what are the two different descriptions? There's supervisory unions and what was the other one? Because I believe we are the odd one, whatever that is, and I'm looking at our.
I mean, it's superintendency union technically, and then you can.
Right.
And then Vermont calls it something else.
Because when we refer to it statewide, there are different union agreements and different union structures. This one just like, it went from nothing to stare, you know, this on steroids, and it's just, it was not what I, what I was expecting.
Well, I'd like to refresh everybody's memory that, that our conversation initially started because Mrs. Wadsworth, you had an issue with how we went about the approval of the superintendent's goals and his evaluation. So that was our, our starting point, where, where we focused on Amy as a chair for Tieringham and myself representing Lee as the chair. That's what we focused on.
Yep, so what I, what I actually requested was that we followed the mass general law, which you all asked me to put up, but I could find again, and we created a memory and agreement stating that the Lee Board would oversee the evaluation, the Lee Board would oversee the goals in concert, you know, how is the hiring practice, just some real clear, not a lot of stuff, and define the financial ramifications. This does, this is great. I'm not saying anything, but I need more time to read this. And this, this is not what, I mean, I'm pretty sure the selectmen of Tieringham have never seen something like this. Not that they have a say, but this is about two towns that we're talking, we have 650 students and they have 22, and this needs to be defined better. Or differently, for me differently, I'm never voting for how it sits the way it is like this. But again, it doesn't matter what I, how I vote. I'm one of seven. So I would prefer you give us some time to read it. Let us give you and Amy back some feedback with some notes, and maybe some things Russell can look up and explain why they're there, like where this document came from anyways, like unless Russell has a boilerplate he uses, like maybe there's, wherever this came from and was modeled by, maybe they have a different setup than we have. Those things is what I would want to hear.
It's the Silver Lake Regional School District.
And they're not a K through 12, right, Russell? Are they a K through 12 or K through eight?
They're K through 12. Elementary is, well, the elementary is a superintendency union, and the high school is a region.
Right.
And then, but we have a lot of union agreements, that's the best one, which is the one that you have in front of you. The other ones are more, they're very, very old.
Then did we just take theirs and change our name and put our name in it?
No, it's pretty substantially modified.
Okay, because the Union, the Union 29 has never overseen the sped director, and that is not in Tieringham's budget that they accepted, and we would have to modify that. Wouldn't be a lot, but it would be more than they appropriated their town meeting.
So who does their special education work right now?
It, we don't, we only define the share of their cost, busing, their tuition, which we give them a lower tuition than per pupil, and they only share 8% in the cost of four employees, and those are only district employees, that superintendent, business administrator, and, and the assistants to those payroll, probably now the payroll person. So.
Usually the special ed director would be too, because they obviously have kids that are children in special needs too.
Right, but we charge them for their services through their tuition.
So we do not have a, another document to compare to? Is that what we're saying? We're just going off of brainwaves and what we think we know?
Yeah, I think nobody can find the original document, correct?
So it's, it's, it's open to interpretation what was agreed upon. There's nothing formal.
Well. Interpretation based on budgets that we put forward, they get a budget from our business office with numbers from every year that is consistent. So there's a best practice and there's a past practice, and then they approve it at their town meeting, and we go and represent ourselves there. And so it's, it's, it's a gentleman's agreement, but it's understood what we're covering.
So.
To be put in writing.
So it'd be fair to say that if we had a conversation with Tieringham, they would have a different interpretation than you.
I thought you were having conversations with Tieringham.
I'm not.
I'm having conversations with Tieringham.
Well, Randy, I would be, I would wonder if they'd have any interpretation whatsoever, except we defer to us, because they, we have a great relationship, and we talk about what, what is going on and how things are factored. I assume they would ask Michael, what, what the school committee would ask Michael what's going on.
Okay.
So we obviously need to look at this further.
Yeah.
Yes, we, you know what, Russ, thank you for joining us. We are going to table this for now. We will put it on the agenda for February. And that'll give us enough time to give all the necessary feedback. So if the Board is all right with that, we will put this off until February. So we need to make a motion to table this.
I make a motion that we table the Union 29 agreement until our February meeting.
I second.
Okay, Brenda, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott? I believe. Westcott, I believe you're muted.
I'm muted?
There, I can hear you now.
Okay. I'm unmuted.
Okay, so Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. All right, motion carries. We will table this until next month. Please, members, read your document. Russ, do you have any advice for us?
Yeah, if there was going to be feedback, it should go to the superintendent. It can't go to each other because they're the open meeting law.
Okay. So your feedback should go to Mike.
And you can get it along to me.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Russ.
Good night, everybody.
Okay. Just taking a couple notes. All right, so next on our agenda, we'll go back into our regular order. We have the minutes from the December 8th, 2020 Lee School Committee meeting that needs approval, so I will entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion to accept the December 8th, 2020 meeting, the Lee School Committee.
All second.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And discussion. Nothing? Nobody's picked up Mrs. Hall's red pen?
I have it here.
You need it.
Okay. Brenda, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott? Oh, you're muted again.
Mrs. Westcott, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mrs. Westcott.
I don't know how to unmute it.
I unmuted you, Hannah.
Oh, hosted it, it said.
I did that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, your roll call vote, Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. All right, our minutes are approved. All right, next to the public input, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Larmen.
Members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee.
Okay, Mrs. Hall is chomping at the bit to give us an update. Mrs. Hall, please go ahead.
Right, well, community news here. The Lee Library at this time is open for curbside pickup only on Mondays through Fri, through Fridays from 10:00, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. But it still has the ABC Books for Kids program from South Berkshire Kids. These books can be ordered by calling the library and using the curbside pickup. The Lee Chamber of Commerce has a tentative date for Founder's Weekend, September 17th to September 19th. Unfortunately, at this time, they have no idea when they can confirm this event. The Lee Youth Commission is researching replacement equipment at the South Lee Playground and new playground structures at the Bradley Street Playground. Also, the Lee Youth Commission Subcommittee has received a quote of $200,000 for one basketball court floor. We continue to procure quotes for aspects of the potential community center. Please join us for a Subcommittee Zoom meeting this Thursday, January 14th. We need your input. The link is on the town website under Public Notices. Thank you.
Okay, great. Do we have, Mike or Andrea, I'm not sure who's monitoring. Do we have any hands raised?
I'm monitoring, and I have no hands raised or nothing in the chat as of right now.
Okay, well, we can close public comments and move on them. So next we have our student representative report. So we have Asa and Emma. And I turn the floor over to you ladies.
Hi, so I'm pretty sure, sure all of you know me. I'm Asa Stone. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Emma and I tonight, and we don't have a lot to report. I'm just going to make sure everyone can hear me because my Wi-Fi has been weird lately. Are we good? Okay. Um, so as you guys know, we started, started remote learning yesterday, and it's going well. I think that kids are a little stressed sitting in front of a computer all day, but we do what we can. I mean, it's a pandemic, so I think that the comfort level of students was getting to a level where we needed to be at home, so I'm happy that we made that decision for everyone's safety. Um, in terms of getting the opinion of the whole student body on remote learning, we're going to be focusing on that at our next student government meeting, because our last meeting was last Wednesday, and then they called remote, so we didn't really have time to get feedback on that. Emma and I are both AP students, and so our schedules didn't really change that much, but a lot of students' lives did change in terms of going from having a lot of their own time to do assignments to being in Zoom calls for six hours. Um, a plus to this is that you get to see everyone's faces, you get to see your teachers, and you get to ask questions and actually talk to them during the day, and so you don't have to worry about getting back emails, or if you're going to get your work done in time because you're seeing them. One of my English teachers said that she was seeing freshmen's faces for the first time, and it was great, and they were meeting new people, which is crazy that that's going on, but it's still a positive aspect to this. Um, if anyone has any specific information that they want from the student body, I can like take those questions now, and we can work on that at our next meeting on the 12th. And we're, at that meeting, we're going to be working on feedback about remote learning, and we're hoping to give you more info. It's kind of a short report today, but I hope that it gave you a little feedback on how this is going.
Thank you, Asa. That's great. It's, it's, it's great to hear that kids are so adaptable, and that you guys have kind of rolled from your hybrid situation into this remote situation, and, and I think it's great that, that students are making it work. So did, did any of the board members have any questions? As Asa mentioned, she, you know, their, their student government's working on this. Did any board members have any questions off the top of their head? Or do you guys, we can also email you our questions too. So in case you want to think about it for a bit, we can send them through email. All right? Does that work for everybody? Super, thank you. I just want to thank you two ladies for being so active in our meetings over the last year, over the last sort of six months, because I think prior to this, it was hard to get a student rep to come, and you guys have been able to provide us with some really good, I think, information from your, from your peers, which I think has been really helpful for us. So thank you both ladies for doing such an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Yes, I second that. The civics teacher in me loves to hear student government at work. Um, okay, so let's move on to our next item then. It is the Chair Report. I want to thank all of our community members for being as vigilant as they can. The numbers are going up in Berkshire County, so please wash your hands, wear your mask, and stay safe. Um, at this point, I would just like to state publicly that I would like to step down as the Chair of this school committee effective at the end of this meeting. I have faced kind of an uphill climb in, in taking this leadership role, and, and I'm finding it's getting increasingly difficult for me to be able to do this job and do it well. Um, I, I do have union affiliation. I am a teacher that works in a district nearby. I do have union association, which can sometimes be tricky, and I try to be very mindful of what I say, because I know that there are conflicts of interest there. I also have a sister who is employed as a paraprofessional at Lee Middle and High School, and I am also careful, careful to keep those lines from crossing. In an email this past weekend, Mrs. Wadsworth, you know, questioned the ethical, the ethics around me sitting on the COVID Advisory Board that is seated with our administrators, the teachers, a union president that, from the LEA, Jim Willis from Trittown. Um, it's not the first time my ethics have been called into question here when it comes to my role on this board. So I did call the Massachusetts Ethics Commission. I had some great conversations with the lawyers there. It is tough living in a small community where everybody is so intertwined. And, and Mrs. Wadsworth, you got me on this one. It is not appropriate for me to sit on the COVID task force, because my sister could gain or lose financially, whether it's a decrease in her commuter costs to work, that whole mile and a half she drives, but it still counts, or the fact that she'd be paying for more electric if she was working from home. So these are, you know, these are real things that we have to consider, and as I said, it is what it is. So I think it would just be appropriate at this point for me to step down as Chair. I do not want to leave the Board, but I do have an issue when my ethics, my integrity, and my leadership are questioned on a regular basis. I'm not trying for career in politics. I'm not trying to become a school administrator. I actually just like doing this work, but the tone does not allow for healthy discourse, and I feel it's, it's most appropriate for me to step down as Chair and allow another one of our board members to step up and lead the Board. So I'm not sure if I need to leave this open for conversation. I'm more than happy to discuss this decision with anybody. I've thought about it for some time now, the last six months chairing this committee has been a little difficult. So I just want us to move forward with our eye on the mission statement that our, our public school district has. Okay, and without any conversation on that one, let's roll into the.
You know, I'll just, I'll speak, and I'm sad to see that you may had to come to that decision. I, I think, you know, we, you know, we'll be talking about this a little bit later about the SMART goals and stuff, and one of the key objectives is really how we can work together as a school committee. And it's unfortunate that some folks don't see it that way, but we should all look to, look at this as an approach of working together and supporting each other. And for you to, to get your ethics questioned, to me, is unreasonable and unacceptable at this point, because you're, you're leading this, this, this school committee, you're doing the best you can, and we should be working together, not against each other.
Okay, so I, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm glad you said that, Randy. Who's not working with the Board?
I just made a general statement that we should all be working together.
What does that mean, though? Who's not working together? I mean, I sent an email clearly to Chrissy only, which is discoverable, that's fine, saying, I don't want to be the conflicting voice, I just want to ask some questions. I didn't even know we had a task force, and if someone's going to sit on the task force making administrative decisions, it should not be a school committee member. We don't manage the school. We hire a superintendent to. We hire a superintendent to do that.
And it wasn't done on purpose. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't done to create conflict.
No one was saying anything about her ethics. So she read into that and then likes to name me out, which is fine. But you know, how, how long, how long can this go on that I get to be named out or innuendoed? Because I'm asking questions that I have every right to ask about. This is about transparency.
Exactly.
Don't, don't gang up with your friend and think that I'm going to sit back and let that happen.
Okay.
Okay. And that's.
It'll all take some time to self-reflect.
Oh, okay, Randy, you go right ahead. You self-reflect.
Okay. And this is the unhealthy tone that I was referring to.
Oh, Christie, stop. You, you did this whole thing. I reached out to you many times. I'm all done with the childish, oh, we're going to do this. Start worrying about the school committee. Start worrying about that. Like, what's the plan? How come we're not communicating to our public the way we should be? Just don't stop blaming me for stuffs.
Okay, with that, we are going to roll on into the superintendent's report. And Mr. Richard has a lot to share here. So Mr. Richard, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
All right, let's see. Get to the beginning here. I apologize, I was halfway through some editorials. Here we go. So, uh, good evening and, and thank you, uh, everyone for joining us tonight. I see we've got a big, big crowd and sure you're all eager to hear what I have to say. We'll get right into this. Personnel is, is first of all, it's not listed on the agenda first in the slides. It is just one new hire, Adam Kozak, who's working as a math tutor to assist with our special education department. So welcome, Adam. We look forward to your work with our, with our students to make their academic progress more successful. A quick enrollment update, we are down two students from December first. Those two students transferred to a surrounding community. So we are currently at six hundred and fifty-eight total students in the district. And we're going to hopefully work to build that number up and continue to increase our enrollment. We know this has been a challenge, not just for the Lee Public Schools, but for all students across the Commonwealth. Uh, and we know that when the, the governor formulates the budget, we're going to see cherry sheets next week. But we, we hope that they're going to continue with, withhold harmless, not to impact our, our, our financial numbers based on enrollment, because many students did choose to take, make alternative plans this year. But we're going to talk about plans and perspectives here in a couple of moments. And one of those has to do with COVID nineteen. As of the seventh of January, Lee is still red. That's been consistent for the past few weeks. A highlight here that the rate is at nine point nine three percent. Let's round that up to 10%, which became the sort of the trigger for us to make the decision to go remote. And so when Asa spoke about some of the challenges of being remote and some of the benefits, I, I want to make sure that I acknowledge and recognize both of those. And they're not just real for our students, but they're real for our teaching faculty and support staff as well. That there are some benefits. It's nice to see a full class of people together at one time. We also know it's challenging to sit in front of a, a device for many hours at a time with little, with little to no respite from that. So, so a huge thank you to everybody for the accommodations that you've made for our switch to remote. We've been planning and preparing in the event that it had to happen for months now. We're hopeful that this is just a two-week stint in remote and that the numbers will trend back in our favor to allow for our hybrid model to be back in place. To date, there are seven cases among our school community. I did notify the community this afternoon that we, we've become aware of two more recent cases. It's very, very important to note that those two community members have not been in the schools since before the December vacation. So they haven't returned to our school communities and our buildings since then. Uh, but because they are part of our school community, I do find it important to make sure that I'm transparent with the community and letting you know that those, that those positive tests did come back. So we are targeting though, a return at this moment for January twenty-sixth, because there's, you need to note that the twenty-fifth is a professional development day. So there is no scheduled school for students on Monday, January twenty-fifth. Uh, this is something that I've just continued to keep included here for, for your references. And when this presentation gets posted to the website, it'll be there for you to reflect on, should you need to see that. And the reason we're red again is that we have more than 25 total cases in Lee. Is, um, Jim Willis, you, you are. And Chairperson Lucy, it's all right. I would ask for, for Mr. Willis to be able to just share his perspective from the Tri-Town Health Department's office around our decision for, for remote teaching and learning and, and what he might be able to share about the patterns that are happening in and around Lee.
Absolutely. Jim, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Lucy. Jim Willis, Executive Director, Tri-Town Health. Thanks for inviting me to the meeting. I do sit on the, the committee where we have weekly conversations and I provide input from what I'm seeing from the town of Lee, the Tri-Town District and, and the counterparts in Berkshire County. As you know, you know, we, I think we and one other schools really the only school that was really toeing the line very closely on staying open for hybrid. You know, and I, as a parent myself in a school district where it's been remote forever and it's not going to hybrid anytime soon. Now, I want to commend, you know, not only the school committee, the parents, the families, the superintendent, the committee, but really going as long as you did in hybrid. And I think that, that needs to be really recognized, whereas many other schools just decided to go remote without even knowing the cases in their community. So that, that should be awarded. So you, you know, the, the rates did go up. Lee has been in the yellow of direct, excuse me, for, for a few weeks. It initially was attributed to an isolated location, the nursing home. But you know, the numbers are increasing across the county and, and Lee's total positivity rate is just about at double digits, nine point nine, it's at 10%, which is the second highest in the county, Chester being number one at 10%. I think Lee's nine point nine. But you know, but as we look around and since last Friday, because the weekly report comes out on Thursday evenings, but I have real-time access to, to the Maven system. That's the data surveillance system for every case that hits Maven. I get direct access to that. So I ran a quick report since Friday through tonight, which is five days worth. We've had 10 more cases in the community not associated with the nursing home. We actually have a, a very young child, um, the, the student that Superintendent Richard mentioned. And, and it's kind of scattered throughout the age groups. You know, we did have to temporarily shut down a Lee restaurant a couple of weeks ago, which since reopened. But the cases are definitely increasing in, in the other parts of the county. The numbers from last Friday, eighty-six cases in the Berkshire, Saturday, seventy-eight cases, Sunday, seventy-six cases, Monday, seventy-one cases, Tuesday, sixty-seven cases. It's been pretty consistent. And you know, if, if we look from a broader lens across the Commonwealth, we know that the numbers aren't going down. I think people are COVID fatigue. We're working really hard to stay up on contact tracing. We actually have the Community Tracing Collaborative now involved to help us out locally because there's just, just, there's just so many cases to, to get a handle on. We're moving forward on First Responder EMS Police and Fire Vaccination Clinics. We held our second one today. There'll be a South County one tomorrow. We'll work that through, through next week. And, and as the governor in the state, let us know more about the next priority group. We're just going to keep working our way through that. And, and I'm hoping in the next week or two that the cases start to come down, at least for Lee. But as we look outside of the borders of Lee, Lennox has gone down significantly. They're, they're getting re, ready to re-go back to hybrid early next week, but they had been closed since, I think, mid-November. But, um, yeah, I'm hoping with the next week or so that the numbers go up. I, I am in constant communication with Superintendent Richard. We tend to text each other six AM and 11 PM on many nights. So I'm always keeping him apprised of what I'm seeing for trends. And, and again, I just, I'm thankful to be working with the people on the committee, Christine, Lucy and others. And, and it's been a really good dialogue and it's really just to put our heads together and see what we're seeing from different angles. And thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. Poole testing. This may be something that some people are familiar with or not. I thought it was important to share with the committee and the community. I sat on a, a webinar today with representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about their efforts at pooled testing. And, and the question, of course, there's few here for, first one is, what is it? Pooled testing is the state's attempts to try to increase the numbers of tests that are able to be administered to keep schools open and, and safe. And so the idea is you, you mix 10 to 25 samples, pool them together in one PCR test. You do this once a week. You get your test back pretty quickly. If, if the test, the one pooled test comes back negative, then all participants are cleared to remain in, in school. If the test comes back positive, then, then what you do is you, you drill down to each of those participants and retest them individually to, to determine whether there is, you know, a, a false positive or to determine which of those individuals is, is indeed responsible for the, for the cohort positive test. They're, they're rolling this out across the state and they're, they're seeking interest. We do qualify because while we're remote for these two weeks, we do plan to return to hybrid as soon as January twenty-sixth, so we would have some eligibility. There are some hurdles that we would need to be cognizant of if this was a direction we wanted to go. One of them is, is funding. The, the state is assuming some of the costs in the first couple of weeks, but districts would be responsible for picking up a good chunk of those costs moving forward. That being said, we do expect federal monies that are coming in to be three to four times greater than what they had been for this fiscal year. So there would be opportunities for us to, to backfill that. But there's, there's some other challenges and hurdles that I need to work through and, and use some of my connections at DESI to refine the, the search and determine whether this is something that I would recommend to the committee for us to pursue. I, I, I have it, you know, already expressed to them early interest in being a part of this because I think any opportunity that we have to be able to keep our students and our staff safe in our schools in an in-person environment is important for me to do for, for the benefit of all involved. A quick note on meals availability. While we are remote, we did distribute meals today. So this week, twenty-six families took advantage of that, that service. And Mrs. Goodfellow, who is our food service, shared food service director with, with Lennox, indicated that in Lennox where they've been, as Jim noted, they've been remote for quite some time. They're serving in the thousands of meals on a daily basis. But we, we packed up, you know, a hundred and sixteen meals a day. So 580 meals were provisioned today and picked up. But if people are interested in as we stay remote, if we stay remote longer than two weeks, those numbers may increase and need may grow. But if you do need to take advantage of this, you can email the Food Service Department at lunches@leepublicschools.net or you can call the number that's on your screen, two four three zero three three six, extension three 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 three. Email is preferred whenever possible over, over the phone, the voicemail. However, we ask that you please let us know by noon on the preceding Friday. So if you're looking for meals next week, let us know by noon on this Friday. And once you sign up one time, you're good to go and for as long as we're in a, we're in this setting. So you don't need to call or email again. Student learning time. The, the state, you'll remember, I let you know back in December that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education made an adjustment to the requirements and the regulations around how many hours of synchronous learning or live learning would be acceptable for school districts. And so they, they polled districts. We, we completed some data collection for them about what our model looks like. And the department cited Lee as being short in the number of live or synchronous learning. And we were at thirty-one hours, averaging thirty-one hours over a two-week period. The department has settled on 35 hours is the minimum. So we needed to add about 25 minutes a day to meet their requirement. I believe in my heart that the models that we have in, in place were good, were benefiting students. They were working. We were effective. I thought it was more important for us to have students sitting in seats in front of teachers than it was to focus our attentions on, on synchronous learning and, and potentially being remote. So I petitioned the department for some flexibility in terms of the implementation of the 35-hour requirement so that we could make any transitions at the semester mark instead of, instead of with two weeks left in second quarter. So I learned yesterday unofficially and today officially that they granted our appeal so that we'll be able to commence with some adjustments to our hybrid model beginning February first. Again, I've noted here at the bottom of the screen, it's basically a moot point for the next week and a half or so. We're going to be remote anyway. But we don't, we can take our time to make sure that on February first, or beginning on February first, we get the model right. And how are we doing that? We're doing that by increasing our synchronous remote assignments at LMHS. So LES had sufficient numbers of hours based on the model that was in place there for our first graders, our first kindergarten, first and second graders who were in, in person. The state polled four grades, first, fourth, seventh and tenth. So we were good at grades one and four. It was grade seven and 10 where we need to make some adjustments. So Principal Brigenti and his team met, discussed, and we got a number of people who, who opted in to do some synchronous remote assignments at LMHS. And I'm really proud of those people for stepping up and doing that. So those people who are on the screen in front of you have all offered up their classroom teaching time, some in limited capacity and others for all of their courses, so that they'll be teaching the students who sit in front of them and the students who will be at home on their remote days to get the same lesson. So they will have some live instruction. So kudos to those people for taking the initiative to make, make that happen, to meet just not only the needs of our students, but the requirements that the state has put forward for us. State's got other requirements for us and a lot of that has to do with competency determination. So the, the, those for the class of 2021, so those seniors who are getting excited to graduate, that the state has had some flexibilities, much like they put in place last year around MCAS requirements, so that students will be able to demonstrate proficiency with passing grades and, and, and accepted classes where they may not have been able to do so previously on MCAS administrations. The test window for MCAS for students in grades three to eight, the, the commissioner, from the time he came on board, has always sort of championed the idea that we test too much and we need to make some adjustments. So he's, he's walking the walk now to some degree by shortening the testing window for grades three to eight. Students will be tested on sampling those questions in each subject. He expects that the testing will represent about half of what it previously had been doing, what, what we previously had been doing. what what we previously had been doing. And then the access test window for our English learners is extended through May 20th to give an opportunity. That's that's something that needs to be done in person. So we've got to give ourselves an opportunity to have students in our classrooms, not just in Lee but across the Commonwealth, to be able to be efficient with that. Winter sports. At this point, we we've taken the tack that we're going to forego the winter season, especially with this two-week transition to remote. However, should we return to a hybrid model on or around January 26th? Athletic Director Thompson and Principal Brigenti are exploring ways for us to launch some intramural basketball for boys and girls. We understand the importance of athletics for our for our students, for our community. And we're trying to identify ways to keep them engaged so that they they want to be in school. But we also need to make sure we continue to emphasize safety. So they're exploring odd and even cohorts for intramural athletics to be offered when we're back in back in person in a hybrid format. And finally, in my report, I I'm kind of disappointed that I that I need to broach this with the committee and the community. But there are concerns that were raised, and so I want to address them. But I am scheduled to take a vacation Friday to Friday, the 15th to the 22nd. There are concerns that were raised to the committee by community members and by staff about why I'm doing that. And I think it's important to note in my own defense that since I joined the district just about a year ago, almost a year ago, I've taken three and a half days vacation. That's it. And my decision to take vacation and my decision to put the district in remote are in no way, shape, or form connected. I have never made a decision for the district that had a personal gain or benefit for me. I make the decisions for the district that are in the best interest of the district. In this instance, it was for what is in the best interest of the safety, security, and welfare of our staff and our students. And I will tell you that I have never wow, I I was, I think that there there were some instances of me being accused of of potentially being not walking the walk and and or talking the talk and being a little bit waffling on on issues. And what I can tell you is I've I've never placed a limitation or a restriction on anyone that it works for me or with me. But I've simply advised for people to follow regulations that are set forth by the state or by our community. And I follow those same regulations, and I will do that when I leave and when I return from my vacation. And I will, like I have done every day since I've joined the Lee Public Schools, I will and will be available for consultation and for work, even on vacation. So I just want to make sure I name that for the committee. So that is that is the end of that report. And I will return to that post-slides in a few minutes when we get to the business manager's work.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Appreciate the clarity and all that information there. Okay, let's move on to our principal's report. So let's check in with Kate at Lee Elementary.
Hi, everybody. I don't have a lot to report because we're just coming off winter break. But I do want to give the staff and students of LES credit for a very smooth transition to fully remote learning. We had very few calls that we couldn't connect yesterday. Today was a little bit different. We did have a little, a few issues as far as Zooms being fuzzy. But we had no problems with materials. We do have a materials pickup set up in case we need it next week on Tuesday or any of the following weeks from 9:30 to 11:30 at the elementary school. That's really about it. I can't say more. I want to thank the parents for being so cooperative and helping us out and being so patient. I do want to highlight one person who, since she has come to us, has done a really super job getting to know a brand-new job and with all the difficulties that we've had this year due to COVID. And that's Janine Salvatore, our school nurse. I can't say enough about Janine, how she's fit in and how her connections to the community and just her demeanor with staff, parents, and students alike has been outstanding. And I just would like to recognize her. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I I think that acknowledgement of Janine is is definitely needed. As a parent, I've had to check in with her a couple of times, and she is fantastic. And Kate, I also want to give some kudos to your teachers for for all the prep work and training that they did to get to get our younger students ready for the potential switch to remote learning. I'm a parent of a second grader, and I thought I was going to have to sit with her and help her through everything. And she was all set and ready to go and knew how to use things and told me to get out of the room. So I think that's that's showing our teachers put a lot of thought and effort into prepping our kids. So, yay. All right, Greg, how about you at the middle and high school?
Well, good evening, everyone. I also, like Kate, don't have much to report on what was a short month due to the vacation, but three main things, basically. First, I also would like to thank our faculty and staff who made this week's transition to remote learning such a smooth experience. Everyone has had a hand in this from teachers and paraprofessionals and our office staff and the cafeteria workers packing all those boxes and the nurse and the maintenance staff. And I also want to thank the students and families who really have have come through in their efforts. I'll say, you know, our attendance rates these past two days have been huge and they've been astronomically high. Everybody's showing up, everybody's doing what they need to do, and it's it's been great. So kudos, everybody. It's been it's been a good start to this two-week period. I'd also like to thank the faculty members that Superintendent Richard put up on the screen a little while ago, who decided to move summer all of their classes to fully synchronous learning when we are in hybrid mode during second semester. That is no easy thing to do. So I want to thank them publicly for stepping up and and doing what they can and what they what they can to help us meet the goals that are set up for us. Finally, I'd like to share that LMHS is in the process of moving forward with something called the Signs of Suicide Program, often abbreviated SOS. This is a nationally recognized and evidence-based program that raises awareness of all members of the school community to mental health issues and trains all members of the community to act, A standing for acknowledge, C standing for care, and T standing for tell when they hear or see something that is concerning about one of our fellow community members. As you know, mental health issues have been increasing for the past several years. Our own Kate Retschel has been right at the forefront of trying to battle a lot of these issues at the elementary level and participating in many programs at the state and national level. Today, we had a counselor from the Brain Center present to our faculty. And, you know, these these numbers, mental health issues among adolescents have been increasing for years now, but they've really skyrocketed during the pandemic. There's a lot of research out there that shows that. So today, our faculty members were trained on the SOS program. This Thursday evening at 6:30, we have a Zoom session for parents and community members so they can learn more about what the program is. And we're putting plans together for that last week in January, when we hopefully return to hybrid learning, to have sessions with all classes in the building and include opportunities for our fully virtual students to zoom in and participate in that. This is this is important work. It's essential work at this time. And, you know, I I can't really say I'm glad that we're doing this because it's we're doing this in response to an issue that is out there. But I'm glad in the sense that we're able to provide some training and some help for our students and community members that need it. So that's all I have tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Greg. To echo your thanks to the teachers who are stepping up to help us out with those those minutes that we have, the gap with, that's great. It's not easy to teach in-person kids, virtual kids at the same time. So kudos to those folks. And Greg, it's great to hear that we've got a renewed focus on on the mental health of our students, especially in in these uncertain times. We we see on the news, it's it's a big concern. So please know that we are looking out for our kids. And for our kids, reach out to somebody, please. All right, next, Jen with special education.
Hi, it's been very successful. We do have a number of special education students, depending on their programming, who are in school, some of them as much as five days a week for half-days, depending on their level of need. Everybody has been really wonderful and coming together in the last couple of days. And there was a couple of glitches, but I think that they're they're pretty much ironed and they've ironed it out by now. The kids are definitely benefiting from being in the building, those who would not be able to learn remotely. And, you know, hopefully, we will be back, you know, on the 26th as planned. If for some reason that changes, we will, you know, come together and look at the needs of all the special education students to determine if there's any way we can can or should increase services for other students. And I did want to say that we are looking at preschool. Preschool right now has been closed as far as the integrated program for the for this year. We are starting to meet at the end of this month. I'm meeting with my preschool team and have Mrs. Retschel involved and really looking at what can we do and kind of thinking outside the box. For right now, we are servicing or up until this week, we have been servicing any students in preschool with special needs in person. They're slated to come in for individual services for a half-hour or multiple times per week, depending on their plan. We have made that remote just for these two weeks. But as things hopefully will increase, we will be looking at what can we increase? What makes sense? How can we do that? And I'll keep you guys up to date, but we'll start meeting at the end of January. So hopefully, I'll have a better update for you about preschool in February, at our February meeting. That's really all I have. I do want to say thank you to Do4, Do4 has been wonderful with kind of meeting the needs of the kiddos that we do have coming and going with an AM and a PM session. And and Terry's been really great and helped us immensely.
Thank you, Jen, for your flexibility and your organizing to get our kids in for those services that they need. And thank you to your staff for for working with you on that. All right, next, do we have Jordan for facilities?
Jordan was invited. I'm not sure whether he's whether he joined the meeting. We're not, I'm not seeing him in the
I don't see him in the participants list.
In the audience.
Okay. Is there any anything we need to know about facilities, Mike, that's it's new?
No, just a couple of of updates. There was some, early in the year, limited access to hot water at LES. And that's the the issue there has been identified and resolved. And so thanks to Jordan for his work on that. Since we last met, the air purifiers had all been deployed to to classrooms. So there is an air purifier in all instructional spaces in both buildings. And his team was on top of any inclement weather that we that we got. So they're using this this time. They've made some adjustments to schedules while we're in remote to try to team tackle some some additional work and cleaning and such in the buildings. So we're not having a formalized first shift and second shift. That second shift has kind of been brought back to have more overlap with the first shift for these two weeks to try to be able to get some other work done. But I think that covers it. If there's anything else, when I check into Jordan tomorrow, I'll send it to the committee in an email.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on to our committee reports. We've got the Finance Subcommittee up with warrants. So Randy, I'm going to turn it over to you, I think, right? Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we had two warrants that the Subcommittee approved. The first one was the was payroll, which was for $265,866.12. And the second the second piece was the AP, which was $245,487.87.
So I'll accept a motion to accept the payroll warrant for, and Randy, correct me if I got this wrong, $265,866.12?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the payroll as Chair Lucy just stated the amount.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion? No? Okay. Brenda, could we get a roll call vote, please?
May I please have the amount again?
That $265,866.12.
All right, Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
She said yes. I think it skipped.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Westcott? Okay, Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Okay. And Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. All right, so our payroll passes and I'll accept a motion to prove the accounts payable for $245,487.87.
I'll make a motion that we accept the payroll with the amount that Chair Lucy just stated.
Okay, you might need to amend that because it's amount, it's accounts payable.
I make a motion that we accept the accounts payable amount that Chair Lucy
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion? Okay, Brenda, could we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wes, Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. All right, accounts payable passes. Okay, so moving along in our agenda, we are now at old business. At our last meeting, we initially presented the School Committee SMARTboard. We had decided to table that and bring it back for this month's meeting for suggestions, revisions, ideas. So I'm not sure, Mike or Andrea, help me out here. Do we need to make a formal motion to discuss this first?
If you're going to move for a vote, then you would need a motion to begin the discussion.
Well, I think we're still in the draft stages. So today, we're going to get Well, I think we're still in the draft stages. So today we're going to get feedback on it. So we don't need a formal motion yet because it's not in its final stages. Okay. All right. I have lost my hard copy of it. So board, we put it out to you guys for your review. I didn't receive any emails. Mike, did you get any emails with suggestions or revisions? Okay. I mean, I, I'm, at, at this point, I'm willing to just toss the SMART goal for this year. We are, we are very distracted with, you know, living in a pandemic and other things that roll with that. So we have been busy. It's just so, we don't, we haven't gotten a lot of feedback. So we don't know what to do with this.
I wonder if can we take what we, what you guys have worked on, because I, I think you guys have done a great job on what you've worked on. And look to put it into place for the next school year as opposed to trying to cram it in now, given the fact that we are trying to deal with flipping back and forth with remote and hybrid and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't see. Yeah, I mean, this, it is best practice according to MASC. When I talked to them, it is best practice for committees to have SMART goals. This did come as a result of, as part of the solution to Mrs. Wadsworth's open meeting law claim. So I, I don't know if there's anything that ties it into that. But if we got crickets on it, then we'll just
I mean, I think, and I don't want to speak for Andrea, so feel free to jump in, but I think what, when we presented these last meeting, you had stated that that wasn't one of the things you were looking for as a resolution. So though we said we were going to do it as part of like what we were going to do moving forward to be like a more cohesive board. I, I don't think it's necessarily attached to that, but I do think that we do need to have SMART goals, but I think I'd rather have ones everybody agrees on. The whole committee agrees on and feels like are valid than to just push it through because it's best practice. That's two cents, but
I can agree with that. Other thoughts?
Yeah, it's, it's, Andrea, I agree with you and it's just hard when there's no feedback based on these goals or if this is appropriate, if this is something that the board wants to do going forward. So you know, time to talk about this is the, the direction the board wants to go as, as, as a SMART goal.
Yeah. And this was one of the things that Glenn Kutcher had worked with us on, on our Saturday workshop that we attended in the fall. So, so we actually pulled a lot of his suggestions and his ideas and put them forth here, but I'm reading the room and I, and I, I get it. Okay, so we can, why don't we table this until? I don't know. We can table it until July when we're a little less busy? So it sounds like I, I would take, I would accept a motion to table it until July.
Okay, I'm going to step in again. I'm not sure I want, I, I think we need to have them ready to go for July. So that we're ready for the next school year. So I don't know if we want to table them till July, but I, I don't know if we want to work on making them exactly what we want them to be so we can hit the ground running. Am I making sense? Like I I, I, as far as what I've read, I think you guys did a great job, but I'm just one voice in a committee of seven. So I, 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 I think everybody else needs to either say, yes, we need to, that we're on the right path and then we're on the, going in the right direction. And can we accept them with the idea that they would start? You know, can we change the, because we had, there were some dates attached to it. Can we change the dates that are attached to it so that we start in, with the, you know, with the new fiscal year, which would be in July? Am I making sense?
No, it makes perfect sense. I think we can easily adjust dates. Yeah. So do we? Why don't we put it off until people can get back to us? So why don't we table, we can table it until next month and that gives you guys a month to send Mike, Mike feedback so we don't violate open meeting law. Mike can get it to the folks that have been working on the SMART goal. It's, it's Aaron, Randy and myself. And we can go from there. Okay, I don't want to try to sit a square peg in a round hole right now. So I will entertain a motion to table this until February.
I will entertain, I will make a motion that we table this till February so that the seven committee members have time to submit feedback to Mike Richard.
Okay, we had a second from Nelson. Any further discussion? All right. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. One thing is I'm sorry if I'm out of order. Hopefully I'm not. Can we continue working on them as a subcommittee? Even through this, since we're delaying to February, so we'd say we meet again, work on it with feedback and we do that?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Yeah. Brenda, can we do a roll call vote, please? Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy? Yes. All right. So we'll push that off till February. Thank you, folks. Next, we have some new business based on a review we've had. Basically, we need to update some of our policies. In our manual to better reflect the diversity of our students and to provide some protections for students here. So we have three new policies. JFABD, which pertains to homeless children. JFABE, which pertains to military children. And then JFABF, which is children in foster care. On our first round of seeing new policy, we read it publicly. And we recommend any changes or additions. Then it goes back to the policy subcommittee for finalization and we bring it back to the board for a second public reading. So do we? I want to make sure I get my procedure correct here. Do we accept it, then read it, or read it, then do our first vote on it?
I believe we read and then vote.
Yes. Okay. Does that sound right, Mike?
You're reading tonight and you would vote at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. So we're just reading tonight. Okay.
So there are three, there's three policies. One of them is not a new policy. One of them is just a policy that we originally have, which is the homeless students, which has just been amended. So I believe that one we can actually approve tonight, but the other two, we need to just read and look at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
So great. I'll read them. Are you all ready? Okay. So the homeless, so the homeless students, which is a policy that we already had in place, but we've made changes because it was an older policy and there's new, there's been new laws that have come out. As required, so homeless students enrollment right, enrollment rights and services. As required by law, the district will work with homeless children and unaccompanied youth collectively known as homeless students, as well as their families or legal guardians to provide stability in school attendance and other services. Special education, sorry, sorry, special attention will be given to ensuring the enrollment and attendance of homeless students not currently attending school. Homeless students will be provided district services for which they are eligible, including Head Start and comparable preschool programs. Title I, similar state programs, special education, bilingual education, vocational and technical education programs, gifted and talented programs and school nutrition programs. Homeless students are defined as lacking a fixed, regular and adequate nighttime residence, including number one, sharing the housing of other persons due to loss of housing or economic hardship. Two, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks or camping grounds due to the lack of alternative adequate accommodations. Number three, living in emergency or transitional shelters. Number four, being abandoned in hospitals. Five, living in public or private places not designed for or ordinarily used as regular sleeping accommodations for human beings. And six, living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, transportation stations or similar settings. And subsection one, migratory children living in conditions described in the prev, previous examples. Students remaining in schools of origin. It is presumed to be in the best interest of homeless students to remain in their schools of origin, i.e. the school that the student was attending, attending at the time he or she became homeless. Or at the last school the student attended prior to becoming homeless. Homeless students may continue to attend their school of origin for as long as they remain homeless or until the end of the academic year in which they obtain permanent housing. For homeless students who complete the final grade level served by the school of origin, the term school of origin so shall also include the receiving school in the same school district educating students at the next grade level. Homeless students are entitled to transportation comparable to that provided for all other students attending school in the district. The district will transport students who are sheltered or temporarily residing within the district to the student's school of origin. For homeless students attending a school of origin located outside the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing. The district in which the school of origin is located will coordinate with the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to provide the transportation services necessary for the student. And these districts will divide the cost equally. Formally, homeless students who find permanent housing mid-school year will continue to, to receive transportation services until the end of the school year. Students enrolling in districts where sheltered or temporarily residing. Parents or garden, guardians may elect to enroll homeless students in the school district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing rather than have the student remain in the school of origin. Enrollment changes for homeless students should take place immediately. If homeless students are unable to provide written proof of their shelter or temporary residence in the district, the homeless liaison will work with the family seeking enrollment to determine homelessness status. Information regarding a homeless student living, homeless students' living arrangements shall be considered a student education record and not direct, not directory information. Records containing information about the homeless student's living arrangement may not be disclosed without the consent of the parent or satisfaction of another student privacy related exemption. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible. And the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment consistent, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance rights by living in attendance areas, other student assignment policies or intra or inter district choice options are available to homeless families on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Dispute resolution. If the district disagrees with a parent or guardian's decision to keep a student enrolled in the school of origin and considers enrollment in the district where the student is sheltered or temporarily, temporarily residing to be in the student's best interest, the district will explain to the parent in writing and in a language the parent can understand. The rationale for its determination and provide parent with written notice of their rights to appeal the district's determination to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the pendency of any such appeal, the student should remain enrolled in the schools selected by the parent or guardian receiving transportation to school and access to other available services and programs. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Advisory on Homeless Education Assistance contains additional information about educating students, homeless students and the appeal process. The advisory is available at the following link. I'm not reading the link. Homeless liaison. The superintendent shall designate an appropriate staff person to be the district's liaison for homeless students and their families. The district's liaison for homeless students and their families shall coordinate with local social service agencies that provide services to homeless children and youth and their families. Other school districts on issues of transportation and record transfers and state and local housing agencies responsible for comprehensive housing affordability strategies. This coordination includes providing public notice of the educational rights of homeless students in locations such as schools, family shelters and soup kitchens. The district's liaison will also review and recommend amendments to district policies that may act as barriers to the enrollment of homeless students. The liaison shall ensure district staff receive professional development and other support on issues involving homeless students. And the source of this document was MASC from October of 2019. The legal refs are the McKinney-vento Act and Title I, Part A, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. And I just read it. And so we can then talk about a motion.
Thank you, Andrea. That was a lot of information there. All right. So we need to, so this is an amended policy, correct? We, we already have this on the books. So we're amending it. So Mike, do we have to do a second public reading? When it's already, when we're just amending? No. So this one, we can accept as is today? Okay. All right. So I will accept a motion to accept amendments to policy JFABD. Homeless students enrollment rights and services.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept JFABD for homeless children amendment that Andrea elegantly read to us.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All right, Brenda, could we do a roll call, please? Mr. Obin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley? Mr. Kinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucy? Yes. Okay. So that passes. We have two more that are new additions. So this will be the first public reading. And then we will bring it back again on our February agenda for a second reading, discussion and Andrew, did you want me to read the next one? Because that was a lot that you just read.
If you want to read this one, I'll read the next.
Okay, I will do. This is our new policy. So this is a first reading for JFABE. Education opportunities for military children. Sorry, I'm looking this way. I've got it on a second screen. In an effort to facilitate the placement, enrollment, graduation, data collection and provision of special services for students transferring into or out of the district because of their parents being on active duty in the US Armed Services. The district supports and will implement its responsibilities as outlined in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. The district believes it is appropriate to remove barriers to educational success imposed on children of military families because of their parents' frequent moves and deployment. Definitions. Children in military families means school-aged children enrolled in kindergarten through 12th grade in the household of an active duty member of the Uniformed Service of the United States, including members of the National Guard and Reserve serving on active duty. Children of retired military families, school-aged children, kindergarten through 12th grade in the household of a retired member of the Uniformed Service of the United States, including retired members of the National Guard and Reserve are eligible for enrollment for up to one year after retirement. Deployment means the period one month before the service Deployment means the period one month before the service member's departure from their home station on military orders through six months after return to their home station. Educational records means official records, files and data directly related to a student and maintained by the school, including but not limited to records encompassing all the materials kept in the student's cumulative folder. The requirements applicable to eligible students, which must be fulfilled, are listed below. Eligible students are those who are children of active-duty personnel. Active-duty personnel are veterans who have been severely injured or medically discharged and active-duty personnel who die on active duty within one year of service. Students are not eligible for the provisions of the compact if they are children of inactive guard or reserves, retired personnel, veterans not included above, or U.S. Department of Defense personnel and other federal civil service employees and contract employees. The district responsibilities to eligible children include the following. Sending schools must send either official or unofficial records with the moving students and district receiving schools must use those records for immediate enrollment and educational placement. Simultaneously, the receiving school must request official records and the sending school shall respond within 10 days with the records. Immunization requirements of the district may be met within 30 days from the date of enrollment or be in progress. Receiving schools must initially honor placement of students at all courses from the sending school. These include, but are not limited to honors, international baccalaureate, advanced placement, vocational, technical and career pathway courses that those courses are offered in the receiving school and spaces available. Receiving schools must also initially honor placement of like programs to those of the student in the sending state, including but not limited to gifted and talented programs and English as a second language programs. Receiving schools are not precluded from performing subsequent evaluation to ensure the appropriate placement and continued enrollment of the student in courses and programs. In compliance with federal law, special education students must be placed by the existing IEP within reasonable accommodations in the receiving school. The district will exercise as deemed appropriate the right to waive prerequisites for all courses and programs while also maintaining its right to reevaluate the student to ensure continued enrollment as deemed appropriate. Students of active-duty personnel shall have additional excused absences at the discretion of the district for visitation, for visitations relative to leave or deployment. An eligible student living with a non-custodial parent or other person standing in loco apprentice shall be permitted to attend the school in which he or she was enrolled while living without the custodial parent, without any tuition fee imposed. The district high school will accept exit or end-of-year exams required for the sending state. National norm reference tests or alternate testing instead of testing requirements for graduation in the district, in the district receiving state. If this is not possible, the alternative provision of the Interstate Compact shall be followed in order to facilitate the on-time graduation of the students in accordance with compact provisions. This is also from MASC, October 2019. And our legal references are MGL 15E Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. So that's our first reading of that new policy. We will bring it back again in February for our second public reading. Next, we have children in foster care, JFABF.
Okay. Uh, education opportunities for children in foster care. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the educational stability of students in foster care. Educational stability has a lasting impact on students' academic achievement and well-being. And the school committee is committed to supporting all efforts to ensure that students in foster care have equal access to high-quality stable educational experiences from preschool, if offered, through high school graduation. Irrespective of the location of a foster care placement, students in foster care will continue to attend their school of origin unless after a collaborative decision-making process, it is determined to be in the student's best interest to enroll in and attend school in the district in which the student resides in foster care. Enrollment of students in the district where they reside in foster care will take place immediately upon such a determination. The district has designated a point of contact for students in foster care. The district and the dis, and the point of contact will collaborate with the Department of Children and Families, otherwise known as DCF, to ensure their students can access transportation and other services to which they may be entitled. Best interest determination. Decisions about whether a student in foster care should continue to attend the school of origin should be made collaboratively by DCF, the student, if appropriate, the student's family and/or foster family, or if different, the person authorized to make educational decisions on behalf of the student. The school and the district of origin and, when appropriate, the local district where the student is placed. Best interest determination should be focused on the needs of each individual student and account for unique factors about the student and his or her foster care placement. Every effort should be made to reach agreement regarding the appropriate school placement of a student in foster care. However, if there is a disagreement regarding school placement for a student in foster care, DCF will finalize the best interest determination. The district can seek out review of DCF's decision by utilizing a foster care school selection dispute resolution, resolution process established by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, and DCF. Decisions made through this process are not subject to review. To the extent feasible and appropriate, the district will ensure that a child remains in his or her school of origin while the disputes are being resolved to minimize disruptions and reduce the number of moves between schools. Transportation. The district of origin must collaborate with DCF on how transportation will be provided and arranged to ensure that students in foster care who need transportation to remain in their school of origin will receive such transportation while they are in foster care. Transportation options may include using Title I funds, establishing regional collaborations among districts, coordinating with existing routes for transportation, seeking help from foster parents, et cetera. Absent, absent other agreements between the district and DCF, the district of origin is responsible for providing transportation to and from the school of origin. Immediate enrollment. If it, if it is in the best interest of a student in foster care to leave the school of origin, the student must be immediately enrolled in school in the district in which he or she resided in foster care. During enrollment of students in foster care, DCF representatives will present the district with an, with a form indicating that the student is in foster care along with a state agency identification badge. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exemption. Students and families shall be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment consistent, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the school's student's previous school. Attendance rights by living in attendance areas, other student assignment policies or intra or and inter district choice options are available to students in foster care, homeless families, on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a marina- manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Source is MASC from 2019 and the legal references are Every Student Succeeds Act, uh, Fostering Connections to Success, including Increasing Adoptions Act of 2008.
Thank you. So that new policy will also be brought back in February for the second public reading. Okay. All right. And now we are at future business. Our next meeting is February 9th, 2021. And I don't have anything else that I could not reasonably anticipate. Um, so I guess we can accept a motion to adjourn since we've covered our agenda. Everybody wants to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No? Okay, Brenda, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Westcott?
Yes.
And Miss, Mrs. Lucy?
Yes. Okay, we are adjourned for the evening. It is 8:42. Stay safe out there, folks, and we will see you next month. Thank you.